I didn't mean to look at you, man.
We got four, let's roll with it.
That's right. Well, good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. We wanted to, we've got a big agenda today on the work session and we wanted to start with an update on some of our engineering CIP projects. This is something that we've been, you know, we do a lot of engineering projects and we thought that it was time for a comprehensive overview of everything that we're working on. This isn't all-inclusive, but these are some of the larger things that our team has assembled to make sure that you all in the public are fully aware of some of the things that we're working on. So, we're going to start with that and then we have a business license update after that before we go into executive sessions. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Clint Link, who is our Director of Engineering Services, to get us started today.
Yep, thank you. You can go to the next slide, Nick. Um, so yeah, we're going to do a kind of a high level just update of our CIP. I think the last detailed CIP update we did was probably back in May before the new budget has taken effect. And we've done a few project updates along the way and more recently with the state-funded projects, we kind of gave you an update on where we were with NIB projects and sidewalk projects. But this is a kind of a higher level of kind of more comprehensive look, I guess. Um, you know, basically it just kind of shows we've got obviously a lot going on. There's a lot of projects currently underway. You can kind of see how the project's broken down between different categories of types of improvements and the total investment that that we're making in our infrastructure throughout the city. I do want to point out these are just projects that engineering department is managing. There are other projects that Parks and Rec has underway and Jeff Waters and his group are managing a lot of facilities, projects and parks and greenways and trails and that sort of thing, but these are the projects that are kind of following under engineering department, the ones we're working on. Primary our wastewater, stormwater, roads and bridges, sidewalk projects that we are responsible for. Um, I want to just kind of point out that where you see the total investment, that does include, that's our NIB projects, that's our special emphasis neighborhood sidewalk projects, there's general fund dollars in that, there's also the, some of the grant funds that we've received being CTC funds or some stormwater grant funding, the $20 million in state funding grants. So that is kind of built into those, that total investment. And then over on the far right, you'll see just kind of these other projects, not necessarily projects that the city is funding, but city may have some financial participation in those projects, but they're projects that are being done through development agreements to, you know, with our UCB headquarters here where we're doing streetscape improvements or the floor field pedestrian plaza and field street improvements. Those are projects, really not projects that we're managing per se, but we're very, very involved from a coordination, sometimes we do assign a project manager to those. Um, but, but you have your SEDOT projects, your church street bridges, those sort of things, kind of fall into those other categories and ultimately just kind of add to our workload and we got to have somebody managing those projects for the city. I want to point out before, what I'm going to do is turn it over to our division managers to kind of give updates on some of the higher level projects or projects we felt like would be a good project to give you an update. We can provide an update on any project that maybe we don't have a slide for and we'd be happy to just, if you have a certain question about one, we'd be happy to give you the update. Um, but you know, we're, we're currently kind of handling about 90 projects, a little over $100 million in investments. So it's pretty, pretty healthy workload. We're very, very excited to have these, the funding and be working, there are a lot of, lot of good projects and good investments being made. A couple of things I want to point out before I kind of turn it over to the project managers is we're still dealing with, um, really just increased construction costs across the board. Primarily with asphalt pavement and concrete is where we're seeing the biggest cost increases, but we're seeing increases even in our sewer lines, storm drain pipe, that sort of thing, just general construction costs. So trying to manage that has been a, a challenge for us and it's just something, it's almost like the new normal we're dealing with when it comes to construction pricing. So that has affected some of our, obviously our project costs, but just getting projects kind of off the ground and running. Another challenge we're kind of dealing with right now is just contractor selection. We, we just don't have a large, I guess, list of contractors bidding on our work. Um, we've, we've had to bid some projects multiple times.
Is that because they're so full, their books are so full?
I think it's just like a supply and demand issue. They're so busy on other projects. SEDOT is doing a lot of pavement and paving and construction right now, which I'm glad they are, but it's just adding to, you know, a decreased workload for us. Um, but there was two projects on the Academy Bypass where we bid it three times out and didn't get a single bid. So that's created some challenges for us. And then just, we're still kind of seeing some material supply issues, not quite as bad as what we were dealing with two years ago, but it is still some supply issues out there that are just more or less affecting how quickly we can get projects going sometimes. So with that-
When we, when we rebid, what do we change?
So we, we will look at the scope and see if there's things that we can try to clarify within the scope, if there was some confusion. Obviously anytime we can take risk off of the contractors and, and reduce some of the risks maybe on a project, that helps. Um, and then, then we kind of look at maybe, um, we can maybe package projects differently with other work just to maybe make a bid more attractive.
Bigger.
Bigger quantity of work.
Is there any issue with people not wanting to do work- Is there any issue with people not wanting to do work with us and systems or?
Have not.
We still have a good reputation.
I think we've got a great reputation.
Because the state's doing, the state's doing, I can't remember, $300 million new money every year paving.
Yeah, they've gone from a $1 billion budget to a four, a little over $4 billion budget in the last 10 years.
Is this breakdown pretty, I mean, is this what you see on a yearly basis or is this?
This is a much higher budget just with all the.
I mean, the mix between categories.
You mean, is it annual or is it multi-year projects?
So, so, so for instance, let me spitball that math. 24 plus 10, 34, 44. Thank you. I mean, and then you see how they're mixing these categories. I mean, the life I live, I feel like the only thing we ever do is traffic projects. But, but clearly we do more neighborhood sidewalks followed by roads and bridges in this snapshot. My question is over time, recognizing the NIB's influence on this, would you find ourselves doing proportionally projects distributed across these categories?
I think it's probably, probably proportionate. I think it, it provides a good view, a snapshot, if you will, the normal typical bid, I guess, or I mean budget.
In our bond, and I'm looking for Patricia, but Karen can answer this down there. In the bond for the NIB, I know there are obviously repayment guidelines. Are there, are there restrictions on deploying it timing wise? In other words, do we have to encumber certain amounts within a certain time of the issue?
There's a pay down, yeah, for a three-year period from the arbitrage.
Okay. So that, does that affect what, in other words, they've got a calendar tick tocking on NIB, NIB money being deployed. So you kind of got deadlines to get it out there.
Yeah. And we're, we work very closely with OMB on when we bid projects and when they want to draw down additional funds because, yeah, that timeline.
And that's why we haven't issued the round two. We want to see exactly where we land and what the amounts needed for round two are.
Okay.
So we want to make sure that we fully, you know, utilize the funds that we have on hand, not under the NIB, but also on the sewer projects. This is probably just a, a current snapshot. I'm sure in other years, other capital years, like wastewater might have more, other capital, you know, funding, you know, need than say roads and bridges, you know, it's just.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I would say roads and bridges and sidewalks, getting a lion's share of, of funding in our normal CIP year. But we're, you know, our wastewater, stormwater, those are enterprise funds and we operate with our rehab program primarily with wastewater and a capacity for stormwater.
This may be related to Will's question, but is, is this annualized? I mean, can we, can we say that we're spending a hundred million dollars in these projects a year or are a lot of them multi-year?
No, they're multi-year.
They're multi-year.
Okay.
Okay. We'll talk about sidewalk projects. Eddie's going to kind of give us a little overview. He manages our sidewalk program. And he's been very busy between the NIB and special emphasis neighborhood projects.
Slowing down anytime soon, it doesn't appear. So just quick and dirty, this is neighborhood infrastructure, our infrastructure bond sidewalks. We have roughly 12, 13 streets in our NIB. We did take out Keith Drive from Lounes Hill to Perrin to try to get the cost more in line with what we have available. So you can see these, you know, these streets. What we've seen too, quick and dirty is, is from our last bids that we received, the estimated cost is about 450 something dollars a linear foot. So it has went up tremendously the last two or three years. Nick, if you want to just go on to the next slide, if anybody has any questions on this slide.
Would you say, go back one slide. So for example, I mean, Lounes Hill, the big number, does that indicate that you've gotten the right of ways needed? Or do you move forward into design until you've got the firm from them?
Well, we, we, we think based on our, because we did some preliminary, our surveys went out, checked the right of way and stuff. We don't think we have any right of way issues for this one. We're going to be able to do all the work within the current right of way. So that, that, that right of way should not slow us down any.
Gotcha.
Eddie, approximately how many linear feet is a quote unquote block? I always try to convey, impress upon constituents that sidewalks are the most expensive thing I've ever discovered. And so I try to say, you know, for instance, a block of sidewalk is.
We have an irregular grid network in Seale, but a typical block's going to be between 500 and 700 people.
And it's, it's $420, $420 per, per foot.
456.
Yeah, about 450 per linear foot.
Thank you, Dorothy.
But now that includes, you know, all the curb and gutter sidewalk, any storm drainage improvements, I mean, the whole project.
See, every Clint says that.
Most of the streets where we're installing these new sidewalks are streets that really weren't built to our standards when they were constructed. So they don't have curbs, they don't have drainage systems. Anytime we put sidewalks in, if we can't get a safe buffer separation of that sidewalk from the street, we'll put curb and our curb alone in. And when you start putting curbs, you have to put drainage systems in anyways. So it's, it's a little more than just a sidewalk enhancement to a street.
That, that is true. And plus they look nice. We tried to put saw, get everything stabilized. So everybody's always very happy with that.
Eddie, what was the number we estimated when we did the original NIB estimates?
I think the original estimate's tonight. I think I should have looked that up.
I think it's eight point something.
Somewhere like 420 maybe.
But the total, when the total, weren't we around eight points?
It was about eight and a half, yes. So it's, it's went up considerably. Plus we also took out Keith, that, or Keith Drive, which hopefully we can do that down the road, you know, once we get this done. So. Okay. Special emphasis neighborhood sidewalk projects. This is through our CDBG grant, which is between the CDBG grant and the instep. I think we're doing about 4.5 roughly. But as you can see, the cost has went up. So it's going to be a little bit more. We have taken off Ackley Drive because we've got some major right of way issues that we will have to look into how we make and work that out. It will require a lot more money, some shifting of the road. But we're doing, I think it's, I think it's 11 streets that we're doing. We have currently, we are in, on the last day of the, well, we'll sit for the public.
Comment period.
Comment period. Today's the last day. So after today, the federal government will have roughly two weeks to review. So once that's done, we're, we're going to hopefully be in construction real soon. We're hoping to advertise for our first good traction long hill street in Phoenix. This will be our first project. We'll hopefully advertise that this weekend. So hopefully by the first year, we can be in construction on, on our special emphasis neighborhood.
Is the problem with actually that new house that was just put up?
It's, it's no, it's actually some of the existing houses, right? You get Nickel Town Road, Becca Street. Like one of the houses is just right, right on the street. Plus the right of way is literally on, it's touching the back of the curb. So we would literally have to probably shift the roads as we're coming down and hopefully get it put in between the existing right of way. But it would require a little bit additional work to do it.
Let's not forget about that one. That one's kind of my pet.
That one needs to be done. It would really, really, really good project. We're going, we're going to keep looking at it. We've got it surveyed. We just got to get a good design and get it worked in.
And why is Potomac not on this list instead of other lists?
Potomac, because it was just done under the NIB.
Okay. It's just different.
Just different, slightly different, slightly different place. And a couple of really nice pictures. Algonquin Trail, we just finished that. That was one of the first NIB projects. Looks great. Everybody's really, really happy with it. I mean, only thing, and they're working on it today. We got to do a little bit of, a little bit of paving, but we had a little trouble getting our paving contractor out there. There was some other work with the trails project bridge they were working on. We didn't want it to get messed up. So, and got one more picture of Doe Street. This one turned out great. School worked with us. This lady here is very, very happy, loves the work. So, you know, please, if you have a chance to ride by and look at these rigs, I think, I think you'll really like what we're doing.
We were able to get Doe and Algonquin going sooner because they were more or less gap projects, shorter projects. We were able to do the design in-house. No right of way issues, just allowed us.
Is that, is that in Green, um, Greena?
West Green.
That's where we've been doing all that paving.
Ms. Manager.
Yes, sir.
Let me brag on the guy behind me for a second, Eddie. You know, when you're doing sidewalks, we get all excited, but not every homeowner is excited because you are taking
True dad.
many times part of their front, part of their front, even though it's in the right of way, still the front yard. And I had some prickly situations on Chick Springs where a bunch of front yard was being taken because it came down, they had cut into it. There's no one with better bedside manners to talk to neighbors and, and get them to feel good about it at the end of the day than Eddie behind you.
He's the sidewalk whisperer. We used him on Cleveland. Send Eddie in.
He's excellent.
Yes, he is.
You get, you get some people sometimes a mad as hornet, you send Eddie in, they're like, okay, all right, all right, I'm good.
Sidewalks for Eddie, we want.
He typically takes pictures of the projects he's previously done. And when they see the quality of work, they get a little more excited about it.
And when they find out you're being honest with them and you're all interested in what you tell them, then they usually are very, very happy.
Yeah. Kudos to you and your team. Quick update on our wastewater program.
All right. Yeah. So I just wanted to kind of highlight three, three of our projects. South downtown sewer improvement. This is a grant funded project. We got a $3.9 million skip grant for this. And the city's match is about $1.3 million estimated currently. That might go up depending on our actual bid amount. But this project was identified in the South Downtown master plan study. Coincidentally, the McDaniel Bridge project happened, which is making this project possible. Without the McDaniel Bridge project, we would have had to consider a pump station or some other option to handle the future development in the South Downtown area. So this is nearing 90% plans. We hope to have this bid in January 24 and then construction completion by April of '25. So it's a, it's a good project. Lots of, lots of people will be impacted with this, with this development.
Basically a sewer capacity issue. Right now our South Downtown has limited sewer available, available capacity. So as we see development continue in South Downtown, you know, we know a lot of development is going to happen after County Square. You know, as County Square comes online. So providing this capacity need is going to be important. I'm just keeping up with that.
Not to get graphic, however, we are talking about waste, right? So if I'm the average person, right now my toilet flushes, my sink drains, I don't know we got a sewer capacity. How are the people going to feel? I know, I know my sewer, my, my toilet would stop flushing if all that development happens. But you said it's going to make people feel a lot better. How are they feeling bad right now?
Well, the developers will feel a lot better when they have capacity for their projects. So the, the people on Knox Berry will probably be the most impacted with this project. At the completion of this, they're going to have a new paved road. So that's, that's the carrot we have to offer. I don't have the benefit of Eddie's projects.
Speedy wastewater whisperer. We always need one. But, but, but I guess what I'm, what I'm driving at is, is we're at, it's not like we have complaints now about toilets not flushing. But we fully know that that development is putting strain on the system. But so Knox Berry is getting a new paved road. Any, I'm looking at Pearl's, is that, no, we're not going along Pearl's.
It's through an easement behind, parallel to Pearl Avenue. I will say that this is also not only adding capacity, but we're addressing old sewer lines. So this is a kind of a rehab project as well. In the Knox Berry Terrace area, we do have lines that are going under, underneath some of the buildings, real close to the buildings in the backyards. We're going to clean that up, pull it out to the public right away and get it out of the rear yards. So there's some other just benefits to the overall parcels as well.
Really quiet?
Yes.
Is there any work going on across Church? Are you picking, are you tying in to new lines? In other words, is there anything to the left of the picture going on on this project?
Not, not part of this project. Well, just, we're going to tie into that, the red line is the one we're working on. So we will, the upstream end of the project is going to end just to the west of Church Street.
Okay. Because those people are, I mean, the people along those roads are unhappy right now with all the County Square construction, obviously. So, but we're not really getting into that.
No, we've, we've worked out an easement with David Stone is kind of in here, those properties.
Yep.
General public wouldn't see that work really happening there.
100-year-old lines?
80 to 100-year-old clay pipes that are in very bad condition. And because of where they are, they're underneath buildings, we can't fix them in place. So we've got to relocate them along Knox Berry Terrace.
And then we tunnel under Church? Is the red line the new or the?
Red is the new.
So we're tunneling under Church?
With Jack and Bora under Church Street.
Good times.
Yeah, yeah. Next, Red Street. So we've got about 850 feet of sewer line in Red Street installed so far. We hope to be jack and boring our sewer and stormwater lines under the railroad tracks by January of '24. So this project's supposed to be completed by April of '24. So this is another project. It's allowing at least four or five developments along Red Street to, to proceed. It was a, mainly a capacity upgrade with some, I mean, these are old eight-inch clay pipes. So they, they needed to be either rehabbed or replaced, which we've decided to replace them, allow for capacity improvement.
Long, longstanding stormwater capacity and wastewater capacity issues on Red Street. So this project, take care of that.
We're replacing the 18-inch storm drain under the railroad track with a new 48-inch storm drain. So we'll hopefully be able to not have any more complaints of flooding in that area. And lastly, we have a rewall wet weather program. Rewall's identified this area highlighted green as having excessive inflow and infiltration into the sewer systems. Our sewer lines are, are failing in this area. The current phase of the project is our SSES, which is a sanitary sewer engineering study, where we go in camera, clean, smoke test and dye test the sewer system to figure out where all the defects are. They're going to come up with a, our consultant is going to come up with a plan to fix those. This is a fast-moving project. We expect to have our, the SSES work done in March, followed by a, a construction project. Based on past experiences, we are estimating about $7.5 million worth of rehab will be identified in this project.
Is the county doing stuff too?
Metropolitan sewer, so this is the upper end of a bigger drainage basin. Metropolitan sewer has their system just south of us here in the picture. And they are, they've received several grants to, to fix their lines in that area.
Paul is going to give us an update on a few high-level stormwater projects.
A few of our active stormwater projects. Southern side stream bank stabilization. This goes right, right next to the Bethel Church of God from West Washington Street all the way down into essentially the, those, those wetlands next to Unity Park. We, we do not have our Army Corps permit in hand, but that should be coming momentarily. And we'll be able to bid this project out looking at around $670,000 for this, uh, stream bank stabilization as well as banks of removal project. So it's going to go from a zero to a beautiful creek once it's all settled. You, you know, this happened at the, at the storm damage there at my first, first Baptist church. We do have our Army Corps permit as of last week. So now we have our contractor scheduled to start the work the week right after Thanksgiving. Coordinating with the church on that as well. They're happy that we're able to get in there and fix that stream bank. Trail's been open, but as you can see, right, it's been falling off to the edge. So it's high time for the repair.
Do we, Paul, I mean, we just finished with the, the ones behind Andover around there. I mean, you know, do we foresee more in this section coming along?
I would think so. I think it's possible. And what happened here in this latest one was there was a, a large tree that just got super saturated and fell in and everything fell in with that tree. So, you know, it's difficult to go in and try to address every single tree along the river. But yes, I would say that there's a potential for it to happen as well.
And, and we don't, I mean, that, that's all on us. The county doesn't absorb any of that. And, and we don't, I mean, that, that's all on us, county doesn't absorb any of that. I just, we spent, I mean, I guess this isn't each money compared to some other things, but that is a vulnerable area along there. As evidenced in the last couple of years.
Uh, North Main Rotary Park, we just completed um, our stabilization efforts. We do have some planting left to do. I think we've got four hundred plants that's, that it's going to go into the North Main Park. And we do that in the dormant season, right, so it's going to be sometime in December when those plants go in, but uh, a, a, a real successful. Um, stabilization project there, these are, these are methods we've used a lot in other spots and I'm sure it's going to stand for years from, from here on out.
Paul, I'm going to do an editorial comment for maybe our younger crowd here. But remember, Lillian, in nineteen ninety two, there were some members of staff who are not any longer here. Who wanted to pipe that creek up and bury it and look at it now, so thank you, it's a real asset.
So what younger people are you talking about?
Not you.
That's why you asked that question, but you didn't know.
Uh, I think this is my last uh, update for highlighted and stormwater projects, but uh, this one is also teed up for the week after Thanksgiving. To get started on the Myers Drive culvert replacement. Um, uh, so we'll be, we'll be out there opening up that, that area, replacing some um, sanitary sewer pipes and putting in a much larger culvert. To have a higher level of service for, for stormwater, that's for Myers, Myers Drive.
All of those, and I, you know, to me, it's all stormwater and individual projects, but, but. Streambank stabilization like the one behind First Baptist is emergency repaired. That would not be something that would appear on stormwater two point O. Maybe Myers Drive did.
Myers Drive did.
Okay, so, so how are we in terms of, because stormwater two point O is our, our, our aspirational projects. In the queue to be done, and then our income follows a curve, right? How are we in terms of our income from stormwater on our property taxes versus tackling stormwater two point O projects? Are we looking at that, especially as we head into budgeting? You know, are we at a nexus to where we're not making enough end runs on stormwater two point O and something's got to give?
You can look at the project list for stormwater two point O, you can see projects that are not out to bid right now. Those are more or less a function of budget. And so when you look at a particular project, you can see that priority and that importance of that project. So yes, there are, there are projects that aren't being funded right now, just based on the amount of money.
When they're prioritized, are they prioritized like A, B, C, or a, a score? How does that prioritization work?
We have a pretty good scoring system on lots of different criteria and how they rank based on the amount of people that they affect. Kind of infrastructure they, they affect, what is the um, impact of the actual solution? What is the effectiveness of the solutions? Uh, and then there's another scoring for bang for buck, how much is it going to cost? You could have a project that costs ten million dollars, but how much, how much uh, benefit do you get for that? So that's how, that's how it's ranked, it's a pretty, um, it's a pretty in-depth stormwater two point O kind of ranking.
I guess I get it all that because, you know, those, those projects, unless we're pecking away at it. Uh, unless we believe that severe weather events are going to stop, which I don't think anyone in here believes. We, we could back ourselves into a corner over time to where we're in emergency repair mode all the time, right? Reactionary versus proactive, and I just sense we're getting, we're, we're coming to that and, and would look to, you know. Hear from staff loud and clear as we head to the retreat on, you know, your thoughts, where we are on that and what we need to do to adjust.
I think some of the things that we've put in place with the new zoning code and the subsequent soon to follow engineering design specifications manual. To address stormwater at the very front of development will go a long ways towards what we're able to do sustainably for the long term. Community stormwater.
Another question, and this is more the wastewater, maybe stormwater driven, County Square projects as they come in are not necessarily paying taxes. That we will reap, as, as I recall, in other words, there are plenty of. Um, plenty of time will have to go by before property taxes are realized on that, so when we expand our sewer lines. Around there, that's coming straight out of our enterprise fund and subsidized with general fund if necessary, or? You see what I'm getting at?
South Downtown is, isn't necessarily serving.
I'm really talking about the, the County Square area ones, that, that, that looks like a.
But it's all the enterprise fund, I mean, wastewater would all be the enterprise.
Okay, we, we never are funding those with anything other than the enterprise fund, is that?
The only time that we have funded anything would be paving after stormwater. So there's been one project, there's some general fund. They should be standing there. But it's, that was the only, because it was such a significant. And the, so the rates for the wastewater should pay for the, you know.
And a culvert replacement, I know dumb question, is literally you're just removing the existing and putting in a new one with. Maybe walls or stones or something more?
Much more of a capacity that you're, you're replacing it with, yes. There's going to be an active pumping operation, pump round operation, where you put in a, a much larger culvert.
I mean, we're, we're still talking about an open stream though, right?
But a bigger.
It's going underneath the road and, and it won't over top, it won't over top as easy, you know.
And then it erodes land, is it? Meaning like right now, if it goes over the top of the road, it's.
Is that right at curb, where is that culvert? Is that right at the curb? Going up the hill? And that's the hill going this way, right?
That was where um, Councilmember Carpenter used to live and he made it loud and clear with photos, what was going on.
Tops and roads and bridges, Nick? Good afternoon, everybody, um, I am going to talk a little fast because we're running short on time, but feel free to stop me um, if I'm moving too fast. Uh, Willard Street Bridge Replacement was on our NIB projects list. Um, we're getting, we just, we got to about thirty percent design and one of the main focus points of this project is. How do we make the crossing for the swamp rabbit trails more safe? Um, so we're, we're doing our best to accomplish that right now. Um, we're also trying to deal with the railroad right of way, because obviously the current bridge sits very close to that railroad right of way. Um, so the existing pedestrian bridge is actually mostly in that right of way. Um, so we're trying to figure out how can we incorporate the trail crossing on this bridge without. To having too many impacts on railroads property and, and how do we accommodate all of that? Um, right now, we're looking at having um, a crossing on both sides of the bridge. The whole bridge would essentially act as a speed table type structure, so you'd have to slow down to get up onto it. And that's where our crossings would be, so cars are already moving slower. Um, we are looking at alternatives for, um, right now, we have, if you look at the map. The current bridge at Southern Side to Willard Street Bridge is about a thousand feet. And right now users are using that as kind of a loop pass with the existing wooden bridge. Um, so the current design would put that crossing on the other side of the creek, which would mean two road crossings to continue doing that loop. So we're looking at options of can we get the, can we get the path back to the uh, southeast side of the creek? Of the creek instead, so that we can continue allowing people to use that loop trail as they were. So we're looking at our options for doing that. I do see this being, um, when we go to the public, I do see this being one of the main. Um, pinch points of this project, um, so we're trying to look at options, but I did want to make everybody aware that we do have that going on. And we're, we're trying to come up with solutions to it, um, proactively. Old Augusta Safety Project, so um, Old Augusta uh, Road is one of those that we've been looking at, how can we slow down vehicles? Right now, there's a lot of speeders out there, um, sidewalk network is great, um, we don't have a whole lot of signage. Uh, so we, we're at thirty percent plans on this one as well. Um, we've been to one neighborhood meeting, we'll, we'll go to another probably January, February timeframe. Um, so right now, we're looking at uh, adding sidewalks, um, narrowing the roadway to slow down traffic. Putting in high visibility crosswalks, um, flashing signs at pedestrian crossings. Anything to get those kids from one side of Old Augusta down to the school. Um, so you can walk up and down Old Augusta a lot more safe than you can today, so that's the whole goal of this project. Um, we'll hopefully start construction in the spring of twenty four. Cultural Corridor is one, um, everybody's pretty familiar with, but I just wanted to highlight that we are uh, looking at groundbreaking on the thirtieth. At uh, ten o'clock, um, so we are currently in the planning stages of that project. Um, and that groundbreaking, um, construction will start around the same day, so we're, we'll be, we'll be hitting the road, running on Cultural Corridor. And we're looking at alternatives for getting some of the academy bypass portions of the project done.
You said groundbreaking thirtieth?
Thirtieth, yes. Pavement Management is one that we've had to get um, a little uh, innovative on. So with prices being about double what they were a few years ago in asphalt. Um, we've had to look at other tools in our toolbox for how can we accomplish, um, get more rubber roads paid for the, the amount of money that we had allocated. In the NIB, so we have actually shifted some of our funds from two inch mill and fill to the hot and place recycling. Um, that allowed us to get a contractor in this fall as opposed to having to wait till next fall. Um, all the mill, mill and fill contractors in the area were saying that they couldn't do any work until fall of twenty twenty four. So we shifted some of those funds and we were able to get the hot and place contractor out this fall and we're wrapping up work on those roads. So you've probably seen a lot of their work going on out at Bernie, Queen Street, Textile. Um, so they've been, they've been hitting the ground running pretty hard and we've been doing uh, micro surface treatment, uh, which is a. It's a process that SCDOT has been doing, um, but uh, we modified the spec to make it a, a little bit. Uh, till they get last longer, so this will be the first um, first project in the state that's used this new spec. Um, and right now it seems to be, it looks a lot better than some of the other applications that I've seen go down. Um, so this would be Millennium Innovation in Warner Street. Um, so this was a kind of a scenario where um, we needed to preserve those roads, but also all the striping was pretty much gone on Millennium Innovation. They needed to be restriped, the roundabouts needed to be uh, reconfigured a little bit, so this allowed us to do all of that in one, one small project.
And Bernie Street is going to use the same process?
Bernie Street was hot and place recycling, so that's where they, they take up the top inch, recycle it, add in a rejuvenator, put it back down. And then put a new, new lift on top.
Oh, that's the first time that's ever been done. I've been on council forty two years, I have never seen Bernie Street resurfaced. I watch it every day. I mean, it is a joy.
It's a very.
I used to walk down the street to go to school, I'm saying, I've never seen it restriped, I kept trying to remember, never.
It provides about the same, it provides about the same amount of strength and um, years of service as a two inch mill and fill. At about twenty percent less cost.
Do you know where Warner is in the process? Because I can bet Friday it was a mess.
It should be about done, so yeah, it, it's not typically the road I would do a micro on, but it was, this was a pilot project to see.
So do you think it's in a different state now than it was Friday? Because if Friday was the finished product, then.
I'll go look at it. Another thing we've been doing with pavement management program is looking at uh, patching seal coats and uh, what can we do striping wise? Um, to vision zero goals, so we're looking at instead of twelve foot lanes, ten foot lanes, let's see if we can slow down the traffic. Can we add bike lanes? Can we add buffers? Um, can we add the green paint across intersections, high visibility crosswalks, particularly in school zones? Um, so you've probably seen a lot of new striping going on um, around the city, so that's, that's part of this process. Um, and they're, they're hitting everything pretty hard right now, um, before the cold weather hits. So now new safety project, we have a public meeting coming up Wednesday night uh, at the Greek Orthodox Church. Um, we're going to be presenting some ideas we have from our road safety audit as far as what we can do to make this roadway safer. Um, a little bit less congested, congested, as well as uh, showing the public plans for our pedestrian signal at Stone and Wilton Street. So this is one we're pretty excited about, um, we'll be able to get this pedestrian signal out to contract probably pretty quickly in the new year.
Have you had any um, conversation with, with Stone Canyon?
Yes, ma'am. I've been in direct contact with Suzanne Schaus, who's our principal over there, she is very, very excited and I keep her abreast of. Where we are on the project, so. Um, bigly excited because the number of kids that come across Stone, they have to go to school.
Uh, and let's make sure we keep in touch with the uh, you know, the school advisory committee.
Yes, the.
Yeah, they need, they, they really need to know, because they'll either support us or they'll shoot us in, in the foot. We either talk to them or we, uh, we mess it up, but they're a little too.
Yeah, so Lindsay Bor is my contact and, and so uh, we're hopefully staying abreast, staying on top of that.
Thank you so very much.
Pendleton, Vodrie Intersection and Road Diet, uh, so this is a project that came up in the NIB and if you remember in the um, smaller briefings. We briefly discussed that um, the NIB was not going to have enough funding for construction, so we have shifted construction to. Um, the state funds and we'll be paying for construction out of state funds. Um, I just kind of wanted to give a, a quick overview of what this project is going to look like. Uh, this rendering at this intersection uh, was done by EK as part of the um, small area plan. So essentially what we're looking at doing is how can we make this intersection uh, tee up a little bit better from that South Main Street and Pendleton? Make it safer and narrow it down so that pedestrians who are crossing aren't crossing as many lanes of travel at one time as they're crossing the street. So the whole goal here is um, to make it safer for both cars, but also pedestrians, because right now there's not a great place for pedestrians to cross. It's, it's a very confusing intersection, um, so we're trying to, to come up with ways that we can, we can limit confusion. Shorten the distance that people are walking in the roadway, um, and part of that, we've also been talking to SCDOT. About other improvements we can make to Pendleton in conjunction with this project. Um, so one of the main things right now is we have a long section of Pendleton, there's four lanes and DOT is uh, pretty supportive of us. Doing a road diet on that section of Pendleton, which would allow us to get um, some buffered bike lanes. Um, and reduce everything to three travel lanes. Um, we could actually take that section of roadway all the way almost to the village. So this project has, has kind of gone up in scope, it's just, we've found an opportunity where DOT is willing to partner with us. To get green paint, high visibility crosswalks and make this entire roadway safer as opposed to just the intersection. And we've also started talking to them about the intersection at Pendleton and Textile. Um, and SCDOT is also supportive of us looking at that intersection for a possible either pedestrian signal or full traffic signal. Um, so we've started those conversations as well and we think that all of these improvements kind of go together. And can make one large project or they can be broken up into a phasing type thing. Um, but we're, we're looking at the project as a whole at this point and we'll figure out how to phase it as far as construction funding, um, as it becomes available. But we think it all works together very nicely.
And so you're saying from Vodrie to, to where, like almost Academy, because that's, that's the only four lane section that's right there. You don't really need four lanes, because then you become two.
Right, so we would be doing improvements from South Main all the way to the Village at Mason Street.
Oh, okay, that's exciting.
Okay, very quickly, a couple of traffic projects, um, uh, we got our NIB projects going on, but we also have just a few safety improvement projects. Road diets on Cleveland Street, um, this is a project that's been in the works for a little over a year now. Um, it's interesting that in our two thousand nineteen downtown transportation master plan. Cleveland Street was identified as a street where traffic calming improvements were kind of warranted through the use of um, planted mediums. Landscape mediums, concrete mediums, um, other speed control devices. And uh, this particular section of Cleveland Street is, uh, we were originally looking at between Southland and Ferris Road. Um, just based on some existing conditions, we've narrowed that scope down to between Southland and Crescent Avenue. Uh, but basically looking to do some, a road diet, um, and to install a, a. But basically looking to do some road diet and to install a mid block crosswalk here. Basically to get out of this neighborhood, you know, safely across the road over to a swamp rammer trail connection by First Baptist.
And that's right away, right?
Yes, right near the wire.
Yeah, that's where they really need it.
As opposed to walking to the light.
Yeah.
Twenty feet away.
It's a little fur.
Looking at.
Was that, has that been publicly vetted?
Yeah. We did a public meeting October of last year.
We need to, we need to finalize. It's time for that.
Yes.
I mean, I know we did vetting during eight seventeen Cleveland or discussion, but.
We had public meetings on the road nights and then you all passed the resolution on it.
October of last year.
On February twenty twenty two.
We did it with Grove Road and Alfred Street in Cleveland Street. Then we're also looking at East Parkins Mill, doing some traffic calming and safety improvements. We did a couple of meetings over the summer. We've developed some recommendations for some landscape islands and some just site visibility improvements through vegetation management and some raised intersections. We're kind of, we've presented those recommendations and kind of received some feedback and kind of are ready to start doing some engineering and final design for those. And then SCDOT Signal Rebuilds. SCDOT regularly comes to us, I will say regularly, about typically it's annually. They'll, they'll ask us for signals throughout the city that we would like to see rebuilt. A lot of these signals are on old wooden poles, kind of see the poles right there. And SCDOT will consider using their statewide signal funds to upgrade the signals. And when they do that, we can, we have the opportunity to participate with them to enhance the upgrades even further to mast arm signal poles. SCDOT doesn't do mast arms, so that's an upgrade to them. But it provides a good opportunity for us to get upgrades in the form of mast arms, illuminated street names, signs that are, that are very popular and very, provide a nice enhancement to an intersection. Cleans up some of the overhead utility clutter that you see in intersections. So these are six intersections that are currently in the works with SCDOT. And you can see to upgrade all of these intersections with mast arms, we're looking at about one point one million dollars in city participation. We've got this funds available in our intersection safety improvements project. So it's our recommendation that we enter into, into these participation agreements with DOT.
I'm surprised you're not pushing roundabouts. How much money does it cost for signaling? How much does it cost for the power bill? How much does it cost for upgrades? And then how much, how many traffics are, accidents are reduced and then injuries reduced because of roundabouts?
There's certainly good options. DOT is very supportive of roundabouts these days. They're installing them.
It's a big money saver, isn't it?
It can be. It kind of depends on the project and the geometrics of the roadway and right away impacts and then some of that.
The majority of these particular ones wouldn't work for a roundabout like Pleasantburg.
I was just generally speaking.
Right, right.
But we're very supportive of roundabouts.
But they're giving you the green light here.
Yes. Nice. Okay, that's, that's our update. Appreciate y'all's time. I know that was a little long, but thank you for happy to answer any question.
Your staff, how many, how many are in the engineering department?
We've got forty nine people total in engineering. That includes traffic engineering and operations. We've got, I think, twelve project managers within our group. It's handling these projects. That includes our division managers who also manage projects. Every now and again, they'll let me manage a project, but.
Dangerous, dangerous.
Shannon.
Sir.
I see Spencer here in the room. I don't know if there's any other media. Is it? So just, just a thought, I mean, we go without saying, but the presentation makes me think of this, particularly stormwater and wastewater. But I mean, it's not lost on any of us that one of the top, you know, topics of interest or concern amongst a citizenry is Greenbough's continued growth. And I think each of us as elected representatives frequently get, what are y'all doing about it? And, and the answer is a ton, you know, by the millions and by the dozens of projects. But whether, whether we take the lead or continue leading, but maybe in a different, more frequent, more aggressive way, or if the Post and Courier or any other media outlet wants to beat us in taking the lead, I'd love to see some more prominently positioned articles that talk specifically about infrastructure investments. I mean, we just went through this, but I'm well aware of Greenbough water projects of significance over the next two years. Rewa was mentioned. And it's not as sexy perhaps as the two, three, four times a week front page development project coverage to get there. But it's more important arguably for us to say, yeah, we're well aware that Greenbough's growing. And here are the things that we're planning years in advance and the millions of dollars we're investing to make sure that we not only keep up with, but get ahead of that growth. I'd be happy to give you some quotes. But you know, quarterly, twice a year, I mean, I'm not saying we don't do that. I just think we ought to command more share of the front page coverage to say, this is like literally what we do.
And we don't talk enough about the safety of doing it. When we do it, it does, because I'm saying, if you go back and you think of when we were little children, those of us who lived here, these things were very dangerous and just thank God we're still living. But I'm saying if you put it in now when little children play, they will not have the same situation because it'll be safer. When you, when you change some of these culvers and redo them and, and, and change all of the streets and pave certain things. The safety, this impact is great and we need to make sure.
So if we take a campaign like that, which I think we should, let's, let's do it. But I also think we ought to work hard to verbalize and articulate it so that people can quickly understand how this project, kind of like the question earlier about how, how do you, how do you see this benefit? I mean, in one case the response was, well, this street gets a new street. I don't mean that. I mean, like literally, this is why we expand the water infrastructure. This is why we expand the stormwater infrastructure. This is how long we think this investment will last, another fifty years or seventy five years. Because people, I mean, people literally, I mean, they say, what are y'all doing with that? And it's hard on the fly to be like, hey, how much time do you have? Let me rattle off the presentation you get. I think it commands.
I mean, it could be a, a managing, you know, I'm thinking we can review. So you have taglines, economic development, you have inclusivity, you have neighborhoods. The, the thing that comes in and goes boom, you know, the boom. My, and those are our priorities. I get the tie. But you know, managing our growth isn't labeled as a priority. It's presumed we're doing that. And so to you, to your very valid point, Spencer's got a lot going on and he may not want to tell that story. But we can tell the story as, you know, the, the projects that are specifically tied to managing our growth and anything that's stormwater and wastewater, they definitely fall into that.
I think thirteen Sundays at fifty two, like a series, you don't have to cover Clemson's wins anymore. They're kind of coming.
Well, and I appreciate that feedback. And that's why, you know, we've been trying to use our work sessions as opportunities to really put together a comprehensive overview of the work that we're doing in the city. And it was important to us to have an overview of all of the engineering work today to be able to put it in a once area. This is all that we're doing right now today. And there's a lot more still left out there that's down the pipe that we didn't even touch today. I mean, we didn't talk about major road projects that we're doing like Wade Hampton Boulevard, the pedestrian safety study and all of the projects implemented with that and Augusta and some of the others. But we really wanted to focus on what we're working on today. So if you go into the engineering department today, you're going to find one of our project managers or one of our assistant city engineers working on these projects. And I think it's really important because we're doing a lot and we want to make sure that we all are sharing that information because it's important.
I mean, I think anything.
This is what you all are funding through your budget and your policies.
And anything that addresses the leap in population, the trend and the expectation of, of the, the tens of thousands to absorb in, in GBL twenty forty. There are specific projects on here that are directly tied to absorbing that population growth. And that to me is a managing our growth. A sidewalk isn't necessarily, it's a great thing. It's a safety thing. But roads and bridges, anything, obviously anything tied with traffic. But capacity on infrastructure, increasing capacity of infrastructure is directly tied to managing our growth. And to me that is, that is essential that we communicate those however we have the means to do it.
On the infrastructure, not only managing our growth, it's also taking care of what's hard to pass.
Yeah.
That's right. And over the next few months, you've heard from engineering, but you're also going to hear from some of our other departments that have, that touch that somehow with Public Works, with PRT, with our project management office. Because I think that there are a lot of things that comprehensively our teams are doing and we want to make sure that that's out in the community.
I think, I mean, our responsibility of course is for the city, but we work with the partners I've referenced, Greenbough Water, Rewa, countless others. But just the city engineering projects, by my quick math, you've got more than three engineering projects per square mile of the city going on right now. So you start layering in parks and everything else. And that's pretty fascinating to think there's potentially four, five or six individual projects per square mile of the city.
That's right.
That's well, it, it's not, again, it's not necessarily fund spending, but it's essential. The reason I asked about your staffing, my next question would be, has that staffing bit, you know, we added ten new police officers, sixteen total, and we hadn't added any since twenty fifteen. That is a managing our growth. If we are managing that much more in engineering project money and scope, you cannot do that with the same engineering staff, level of staffing.
Stay tuned.
I'm, I'm opening the door for you. Walk on it. You know, I just, I respect that you can't, you can't. Unless you add people to manage a higher budget.
We're already organizing the walk.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for Engineering Services Group. Now we're going to move on to our business license update from our OMB team. Patricia, if you want to go ahead and get started on that, please for us, we'll move right into that. And we've also got Jody Dudasch and Karen Osborne from our business license office and revenue team here this, this afternoon. So.
Want me just to hit the highlights?
Hit the highlights.
So we are required by the, well, I will, okay. So just a quick overview of the business license tax. It's defined as an excise tax. It's based on the gross income of our, our businesses. Why is it important in the city of Greenbough? It is our second largest revenue source, second property tax coming in. The Business License Standardizing Act was effective on January third, twenty twenty two. What it did was it standardized the application, standardized the definition of gross income. The, had created a standard renewal period or renewal license year. And then it also says that the standard class schedule based on the North American industry classification system or NAX, we base our class schedule out of that. What is the North American industry classification system? Essentially, it's just a briefing mechanism that the federal government uses to classify or categorize businesses. The importance here is that by December thirty first of every odd year, the city must adopt by ordinance the latest standardized business license class. So in general, we have classes one through seven. They're based on the NAX codes. The rates increase incrementally. Class eight is for businesses that have legislative limits or require special treatment such as contractors, railroad companies, pool rooms, et cetera. Class nine is, is reserved for businesses that don't fit neatly in these above classes or have a, a disproportionate demand on the city services such as like nightclubs. Typically resident businesses differ from non-resident businesses in that their rates are typically doubled. Additionally, the rate has two components. There's a base rate on the first two thousand dollars worth of gross income. And then there's an incremental rate on each additional thousand dollars. The current rate schedule has a climbing scale, which benefits high grossing businesses. Today, we only made the required NEX code changes. We would be looking at a decrease of around forty thousand dollars worth of revenue. So we look at this as an opportunity, not only to make the required changes, but also looking a way to streamline the overall ordinance.
So are there winners and losers in this?
Primarily winners.
Mostly winners.
Okay. I'd love to know who the losers are, not right now, but.
Well, you know, the losers are the high grossing.
Let's talk. I'd rather not do this here, but let's, I'd like to know who exactly that is.
Yeah, we're not allowed actually. There's a statement.
I don't, no, no, I don't need to know the name of the companies. I want to know the categories.
So the proposed changes are to, of course, they're required business license standardization or Act one seventy six changes. Also looking at decreasing additional, the additional per thousand rate. This benefits a majority of resident businesses. Discontinue the declining rate scale benefits, you know, roughly ninety eight percent of businesses. Remove the gross income ceiling, which was at two hundred million. And FY twenty three renewals that benefited five businesses. And then also add, you know, from a consistency perspective, this is really some cleanup. Remove commercial property to class schedule seven.
Patricia, this is a dumb question, but when you say benefits resident businesses, does that mean someone who lives in Greenville and their business is in Greenville? Or someone whose business is in their residence?
Businesses are in Greenville. Their business is located in Greenville.
Well, I assume we're not charging licenses for people who don't have their business in Greenville.
Well, if they sell to people in Greenville, then they could have, they would be a non-resident, but they would be charged.
My plumber lives in Simpsonville.
Yeah, okay. So benefits resident businesses is someone who has a business operating in Greenville and that person lives in Greenville.
No, so they have a.
Businesses don't sell in Greenville.
Yes.
Gotcha.
But they could sell, like, so say somebody lives in Fountain Inn and they provide a service.
Okay, okay.
Then that's a non-resident business. It's a live business. I feel like I'm saying every other word.
This may be a nice slide, but what's the financial impact of these changes?
Okay. So businesses with reduced or equal, you know, taxes, roughly ninety two percent of the businesses will pay less or equal to the, to the prior year. And then roughly seven hundred or eight percent will pay more under the new rate structure.
So that's just categories.
And really it just depends on their overall gross income. And where it, it's not necessarily like one category.
But you ran, and you ran it based on their income staying the same.
Yes. Yeah, just.
For like all the other.
And Patricia, forgive me if I missed this, but do you know on average of those who will pay more, what is the average increase?
I don't have that off the top of my head.
If that's, if that's possible to attain, maybe that's a good follow up.
So a little bit out of place, but again, because of the required changes that were needed, we took an opportunity to, to simplify the business license calculations. What we found is really based on Karen Osborne and Jody Dudasch's work is that customers are confused by the scale. They didn't know how to, well, they just didn't understand the period of funding. So eliminating that and then also this cleanup of the commercial property. Previously, any commercial property with gross income of five thousand or less prepared to return, but wasn't subject to tax. So that's just a cleanup item, move it up to schedule seven. And this is just a recap of the proposed changes. Any questions that y'all would like, other than the average increase?
And when you go to that very first slide back where it talked about, we're looking at a forty one thousand dollar deficit if we didn't do this.
Actually, this is going to generate about eight hundred in revenue.
What? Additional?
Again, those high.
That says something about those eight percent, yeah.
I mean, those high grossing.
So this item is on your agenda tonight for first reading. Second reading is scheduled for November twenty seventh. But we have to adopt whatever we do no later than your December eleventh agenda so that, because it's state law that we must adopt it by the end of the year. And then that will allow time for our revenue team to send out business license notifications to, to our community because business license renewals start in February and continue through May.
I'll do a dive this week and if I have any questions.
I think it's always helpful.
Thank you very much.
To have a good list of the tax incentives we provide where we waive the business license. Sometimes I could ask about even not forget how many we have out there now. And I'd like to just ask you to, we could give everybody a review on that. Also gets us all thinking about anything else we want to add to that list.
Yes, that's a good point and we will provide that to you at the next meeting.
Have we had conversations with those whose rates going to go up?
No, we have not. I don't know that we. I don't know that we can. I don't know that we can until. And then um, it would just be a notification process.
Okay. There, there may be a few that we need to handhold a little bit and.
When, when we adopted the state regimes, which really did shuffle things around, like we had a lot of people who were winners or losers, what do you want to call it? But we had a lot more winners than we had losers and still, we didn't really hear that much from people who had it last time. I think we feared we maybe we would, not really.
I mean, this is going, yeah, ninety-two percent, I mean.
Will benefit from the change.
Right. And, and honestly, reducing the um, the resident rates, so for the additional thousand. Trying to make it simpler while also to.
Thank you, Patricia. Any other questions?
That's a great job. And that's good information to know that making changes to a tax structure improves what people pay, benefits them, rather than just always just thinking of tax would just be another, some another burden for them. As, that's exciting.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we're ready to, that, that concludes the two items that we have under regular session. And we're ready to go into executive session at, at your request.
I think the lead walked in.
I did. I'm just right here. I know, it's not that cold outside. I was worried it would be in the courthouse.
So you weren't selected, I guess.
Wait, do you have a motion?
I do and we've got lots to talk about. Get you pulled up here. Um, multiple items this afternoon, most under subsection A two of thirty dash four dash seventy of the S E code, negotiations incident to propose contracts for purchase of property in the C B D at Glen and Ferris and plus the Cleveland Streets. Agreements related to multi-county industrial parks, the position of the city on two zoning matters that are in litigation. And then under subsection A one, boards of commissions.
Thank you.
And motion?
So moved.